It's just to slow people down around the corner.
Yeah.
There's no gas line. It's just to slow people down. It's the only way to do it.
Okay. I'd like to call it over the Minter and Town Council meeting of August 6, 2025. Roll call please.
Dusty here.
Right here.
Man here.
Eric here.
Earl here. Let's all stand for the pledge, please. Okay, next item is approval of the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Dusty, second by Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Okay. Next we have approval of the regular agenda. Do we have any amendments or anything along those lines? Okay. We have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the regular agenda. Second.
Motion by Eric, second by Tom. Was that Tom? Yeah, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Does anyone have a conflict of interest? Any board members have a conflict of interest on anything on the agenda this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on. Okay, now we're at the public comment point. If there's anyone out in the public that wishes to address the council on any item or any issue that is not on the agenda, now is the time. Cindy, do we have anybody? Or is it Jay?
No, sir, we do not. Or, no, sir, we do not.
Anybody out there?
Sorry, it's been a long day. There's nobody with their hand up.
Give me your name and address, please.
Honorable counsel, 273 Holder Street. I represent myself and I hope some of the citizens' opinions in town. I just had one question after attending your recent planning get together. And that question would be that does the definition and meets and bounds of an ADU come fully equipped with a water supply, parking supply, and snow storage? So by the mere fact that I'm going to build ADU, I get more water, I get more parking, and I get more snow storage?
Okay.
Didn't address to me any of those when you said everybody could have an ADU used by right potentially?
Well, we usually don't, we usually don't talk back to public speakers, but since you're George, Scott, do you have an answer for us?
Well, thank you, George, and I apologize that we didn't return your call today, which might have answered your question. The simple answer is that anyone proposing any development has to meet our standards. So they have to show us parking, they have to show that they have snow storage, and they have to pay additional water tap for that ADU, which I believe Jay jumped in, that's going to be charged at a, not the full tap, but a half tap.
Per diem.
So they have to.
Based on size.
They still have to follow our code and meet our requirements. It's not just you get your ADU and you don't have to follow any of our rules. They have to figure out how to, in their lot dimensions, how to fit all these things in.
And their water?
And pay for their water.
Creating the water.
They have, if we have water to serve them, then they would pay for it.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, George. Anybody else out there in Cyberland?
No one with their hand up, sir.
You're mumbling, Jay. There isn't, okay.
No, sir, there is not.
Okay. Moving on.
Kelly.
Oh. Go ahead, Kelly.
Kelly Toon, by 31 Main Street. Just continuing with George's questions, I was kind of curious about the taps, too. I know the town wants to try to encourage development, but I thought we were kind of maxed out on the taps. And how does that work? And if you're getting a half tap, I know if, you know, an ADU could be just one person, so they're not using a lot, but how many half taps would we be able to give out?
Well, yes.
Is that a full water bill, too? Because I know that's going to be changing and that might discourage anyone from doing that if just the water fees alone.
We are getting more granular and tap fees, but as far as development, future development, until we get the water treatment plant built, there's no order for a whole lot of taps. So hopefully that will be done on schedule.
So a half tap, would this all be after the water improvements?
Well, it's, it's, okay, so what is, we're going by this water moratorium right now. And correct me if I'm wrong, but there is a, we have a half time tap fee, too, right?
So we have a half system improvement fee or an ADU specific system improvement fee, which is essentially, I think, just within that first tier. And then we charge half of what a full tap is in regards to the amount. Forty something?
Could be twenty?
Something like that. So in regards to where the water available, we have, as Earl said, we have a moratorium. And any existing lots, as of 2020, the date in 2020 that the first water moratorium was adopted, the existing lots are collection of adjoining properties. So if there were properties that were owned next to each other by the same person at the date in 2020 that the water moratorium was adopted, they get whatever the existing tap SFE, whichever intangible term you want to use on that lot, plus one. So we have, our water engineers and attorneys have determined that we can serve plus one essentially to people. I do believe that Jay is keeping a running spreadsheet of how much water we've given out, but, or sold, not given, but we are, we do have the capacity to serve existing plus one.
So every homeowner, existing homeowner has the right to get an additional water tap where they develop more on their lot. Or up to another.
With our town being quite tight, usually it's not a full four or five bedroom house on top of what you already have. Okay, thank you. I was curious.
I apologize, Earl, for stepping up.
Okay. Anybody? Counsel and committee reports. Dusty, you got anything?
I don't have anything, Earl.
Okay.
Uh, yeah.
I just like an update, which I think is in the manager's report on Monday. Heck, Excel's going to be done on the 24th. That little gem of a project seems to have just gone on. That's all I got.
Thanks for that comment.
Anytime.
Okay, I think I'll just say I don't have anything either. Okay, staff reports. I think of you.
I don't think. I don't think they've given us any clarity on that. I mean, originally, when we came in here and interrogated them, they told us we're going to be done and out of here the week after the 4th. And obviously, that's long gone.
About here.
They're doing the asphalt, okay, so this should be the end of it. And this email came in like an hour ago. The work is expected to be tomorrow, 8:05 and 8:11 through the 12th for asphalt restoration. And I believe that's the end of it. Is that what they were saying, Jay? That the 11th and 12th of this month is the end of it?
Um, I believe that the 11th, it goes through the 15th with final paving. And so the next week, however, I want to make it very clear, every single thing they have told us has been wrong. I mean, that is the only consistent thing I can say. And I pointed that out again to Mr. Stubbs this evening, that he said tomorrow, we're going to be running a little late. And I said, we have a hard shutdown at seven, and you will be fined. So I'm hoping to make some money out of this deal.
Well, as long as they follow through with what they said, which is to be done before the summer surge.
Any questions from council on the report or any other items? I think we're gonna, I think I'm gonna try to establish like a manager-citizens working group in the next few weeks here. I think we want to focus first on talking about events in the future of things we do now, what we may want to do in the future. So if you know of anybody, just regular residents that would be interested, just have them reach out to me. And I think we're going to talk about events and maybe just a few, like a meeting a month. And then I think we may switch to talking a little bit more about parks and recreation and the future there and doing hopefully some kind of more of a serious plan next year. And then our other item after that may be just talking about small business. We can support small business, getting some ideas from the community on that. So yeah, if there's anybody who's interested in participating in that, just send me an email. I really appreciate it.
Okay. I did actually have a question regarding construction. If you've heard, I know Eagle County paved Minter Road, which is happened very quickly. Is, have they provided like a project timeline or any like final design or any details of that project? Is that it? Are they done or?
Are we talking about the trail?
Well, yeah, paint and stripe, but that's it.
You're talking about county roads or?
Yeah, county roads, sorry, county road after you leave Minter.
Big drop off.
Well, there's that, and that thing like I've said a million times, that's like going to be the coolest drag strip in town. People are already going so fast on that thing. And we have a sidewalk next to it that gets closed for wildlife at some point. I just didn't know if there's like a project here.
We can inquire with our town engineer, Jeff Spinell, and have him report back. We, they were required to submit plans for the paving and final condition of that segment of the road prior to doing it. So I'm presuming that Jeff reviewed the plans and that they.
I'm talking past the P D though, is that?
Yeah.
The county, or, okay, so they, they were in charge of the paving design, too, Minter North, SAB?
Let me check with Jeff. There was that break between Minter North's specific requirements and then the rest of it. But I thought we needed to, as a town, review those plans or at least coordinate with the county before they paved it.
Got it, okay. Thanks. Rob, I don't know if it's difficult to do, but if like the manager's report, I thought was so informative, if you can like hyperlink them on the website, just to, because honestly, like I don't think the general town is reading all several hundred pages.
Of the packet? Yeah, we could put the manager's report on there. I'll try to, and I try to format it in this way that gives people just kind of a quick look, I guess, for the public's sake. And one of the most interesting things, and we'll be talking about this more in September, is we had a firm do a cost estimation on the 60% design for the water treatment plant, and that came in a little bit over $11 million, which to me was good news based on the numbers that people were throwing out. And I still think there's, there's a lot of wiggle room there to work with. Obviously, we don't know where we're going to be in a year from now, but I think that was a good highlight. So we'll put it on the website so we make sure people have access to that kind of quick information.
And, and much to our water engineer's chagrin, it came out lower because he's saying, oh, man, they're going to kill me if it comes in higher next year. So wait, yeah. All right. No special presentations tonight, so we go into the business items. Ordinance number six, series 2025, second reading. An ordinance authorizing the renewal of an updated Exo Energy franchise agreement. And is Michael here or? Yes, who is? Harper. I just got back from vacation. Yeah, yeah, give me a break.
Can you?
Go ahead, Harper.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hi, Mayor and Council. As you saw last month, this came before you for a renewal of the Exo Energy franchise agreement for gas and electric utility service in the town of Minter. And the renewal is for a period of 10 years. The previous franchise agreement was for 20 years. And so, yeah, this is second reading. Happy to answer any questions if you have any that came up between first and second reading, but nothing, nothing has really changed since Mike presented last month. So happy to, happy to cover any questions.
I'd like to comment on, I think it was a good job done on the franchise agreement. Be sure in Exo's franchise agreement from 20 years to 10 years, which is a good thing, I think. And, but I had a question, and then condemnation, we can, a question on that. We have the right to, of condemnation with, with, with Exo Energy. Does that mean that if we decided somehow to change the, to a different supplier, that we could condemn their, their network and the new supplier could step in?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. I can certainly look into that. Yeah, but you're correct that we do have the right of condemnation under this agreement, which we did not under the previous one. So that, that is an update from the previous agreement.
Okay, that just kind of popped into mind. And then undergrounding, that's, you know, we've been getting a little bit of money we've been putting away, and we spent some of it. But was there an extra percentage point added to that fee? I know we were getting 3%. Too close?
I believe it stayed the same between this agreement and the previous one.
It's the same, okay. All right, that's all I got. Anybody else got any questions for?
Okay.
Well, that's, that's, that was a significant agreement. It's the first time I've seen Exo get on anything. Okay, so I'll open it up to the public for comment.
Amanda, I'm at 414 Eagle Street. I have a quick question on that agreement. In that agreement, do we have right to audit Exo as a utility provider for the services, to making sure that the services that they provide are adequate or meet the contract as described in the contract?
We do have the right. Harper, do you know exactly the, is it once every three years or is it, or as often as we like?
I believe it's more on a regular, a regular time period. I think it, it is upon request every three years.
And, and this is just another question, I guess, to you. Have we exercised that right in the last contract or are we finding our next exercise?
That is a good question. I have no idea. We might have to call Michelle on that one.
It says both agreements provide for an audit of the company's finances to ensure the franchise fee reflects the amount owed to the town. Is that the audit?
Yes.
Right, that we have?
I don't know if we've ever requested an audit, that's what I don't know.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, what was the question?
Jay?
What was the question?
Yeah, yeah, I should have asked you. Amanda was asking if we have ever requested an audit from Exo before.
No, we have not. And the reason we have not is in the previous agreements, it was a pretty general, it was an agreement that all communities use the same footprint. And that way, the bigger companies, like bigger groups like Denver and Aurora, they would audit. Then with the carry, the carry forward of what they found would be applied to Minter. Because it is such a, it's a very expensive process to audit Exo. I, yes, we could do it. Yes, they would probably pay for it if we found something significant. But for the most part, we would be leaving that to Denver to see if they had questions or ideas, because they're the big dogs in the fight.
Okay. So I guess if the big guys audit came in and they, their, the numbers weren't correct,
We would.
Would we take whatever percentage they were out of whack and we could apply that?
Correct. Yep.
Gotcha. Thank you, Amanda, good question. Okay. Any other questions from the public? Jay, anybody out there?
No, sir, there are not.
Okay. We'll close the public hearing. And this is second reading. So do we have a motion? Do I need to?
I'll make a motion, Town of Minter, Colorado, ordinance number 06, series 2025, second reading. Ordinance of the Town of Minter granting a gas, electric franchise to Public Service Company in Colorado. Good affiliates, successors, and assigns the right to use the streets within the town and to furnish, sell, transport, transmit, distribute gas and electricity to the town and to all residents of the town, granting the right to acquire, construct, install, locate, maintain, operate, and extend into, within, and through the town all facilities reasonably necessary to furnish, sell, transport, transmit, and distribute gas and electricity within and through the town and fixing the terms and conditions thereof.
I'm thinking nobody wanted to make a motion.
I did it last night.
Do we have a second?
Brian.
Brian, okay. Motion by Tom, second by Brian. All in, roll call, please.
Dusty, aye.
Brian.
Dan, aye.
Eric, aye.
And roll. Next we have ordinance number seven, series 2025, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the encroachment agreement on 501 Pine Street. Rob?
This is kind of, I think, been on the administrative background for a little while. We should have the, with the applicant online. They are requesting me to get an encroachment license for their back patio area that encroaches town right away of Meadow Lane. It's a total of 562.5 square feet. This is the first time the town has brought a encroachment request before council, at least in two years. And the last time, I think, we had the town attorney's firm handle this for us. So apologies if I'm a little new to processing this. Did we have the applicant online? Okay. Was the, and again, it's been two years since we've done this. So I don't know what the typical format you guys want to follow is on this.
Harper, have you worked on that, too?
Yes, I did help with this. And I'm online.
This is Juliet Rose of 501.
Yes.
Yes. Hi, Juliet.
Juliet, you want to just provide an overview of your request to council for the encroachment?
Absolutely, yeah. And Harper was kind enough to help me and give us all the information. So basically, what happened is we built on the slab of the garage that was there. And apparently, that is also over the survey line, and then the fence is further. So what we were asking is could we, so underneath, underneath our back patio, which we overlaid on there, is snow melt, which we did the permit and everything through the town. A little late, kind of messed that one up, too, but we're learning. Very painful lessons. And so right now, we're trying to figure out, is it possible to just move the fence? Because once we have, if we have to move it in from, call it the end of the hardscape, hot tub, snow melt, all of that, we need to tear everything up, which is plumbing, electric, hot tub, all of that. Can we move the fence all the way tight up against that and stop there without ripping up everything of the hardscape and the plumbing and the electric, et cetera? So we're trying to see if that's a possibility.
Okay.
It's hard without having drawings and showing you, but that's a, that's sort of the idea.
Okay. And Harper, my understanding is this is a revocable license at the town's pleasure. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, and it's subject to an annual license fee as well.
And then there's an annual payment from the?
Yes.
Okay. And, and that is satisfied? I haven't seen those numbers. Is that, I don't know if we have an actual fee on that.
It's, I think it would be about, I think it's a little over $9,000 a year.
Okay. Any questions, or Juliet?
I think that's the whole amount where we were saying, like, either which way, moving the fence up. Like, we know we have to move the fence up, right?
Right, your request was for the 562.5 square feet, right? That's conditional upon the relocation of the fence. Because that's a 50-foot by 11.25-feet area.
The re, changing the fence makes it four feet by 50.
Okay. So we can, I mean, we would alter the fee based on what the actual encroachment.
Right, right, right. But yeah, we understand for sure moving the fence. I just want to be clear, like, we're not like, no, we're not moving the fence. We're not doing that.
I have a question. How did this happen in the first place?
So we built, so the, when we bought the property, there was no fence. And so we built on the slab. So what we built on was a garage slab. So the hardscape we built on the hard slab.
Wasn't there, didn't you have a survey?
We thought that that, I mean, we thought the garage slab was part of the house. And we bought the house. Like, the garage was demolished, I don't know when, when they, before they rebuilt this home. And so we use that as the limit of the hardscape. And then they had other things past that. So we just built the fence around what was previously there. Never lived in a, in a town, so we just thought that those, we just thought, like, that's it. Like, we just thought those were the perimeters. And when we did the, when we did the permit for the snow melt, we used those numbers that we built on. Does that make?
I mean, the problem I have with this is that I'm sure that's something that all the other homeowners would want to do. And it seems to me obvious, looking at the map, that you're not in line with everybody else's lot lines.
Well, because we're not on, well, it's like Meadow Lane, it says there's an alley behind our house, but there is no alley behind our house or the other three. It says there's an alley now when we are given additional stuff, but there's no alley there. So again, we just base.
Homeowner next door, I mean, why wouldn't I just build a fence? You know, the next person who buys it says, well, I see the fences up that lot line. Why don't I just move my lot line there, too?
Well, someone might make the same mistake we did. There was no, no malintent with this. We used what was, what we saw, and we're just new. I mean, it's, it's as simple as we're new and we didn't know. And we built the hardscape on the hard, on the foundation. I'm still confused of how the garage foundation is over the line.
And did planning approve this? I mean, did you have to go through planning?
It wasn't, it's not subject to a building permit, because it's.
It's not subject to a permit, yeah. We did the permit on the, we did the permit on the hard, on the snow melt underneath the hardscape. But we did, yeah, we did do that.
Most jurisdictions are not checking fences to line up with survey, because we're not surveyors.
I, I don't doubt you sincerely, but I think this is a very dangerous precedent.
No, so what we're asking, what we were asking is to move the fence up to where the garage pad was. Like, we're not, I'm not at all asking to keep the other seven feet. Like, that's not a, that's not an ask of us at all. Our ask is, we built the hardscape on top of the original garage pad. And then the survey, when they, when they surveyed it in October, showed it closer. That was shocking to us, that that original garage pad is not in the property line.
You're saying the original garage pad was there?
Which is.
When you built it, when you bought the property?
And we did not demolish it, we built on top of it.
But you're, you're moving back the fence, but the building itself, what's built on the pad comes as a defense? There's nothing on the path.
It's just a patio.
I mean, it's just a question of taking out the path, right?
No, it has snow melt, which is electric, gas, and everything, all built underneath between the original pad and the overlay.
Which they got a permit and paid, permit fee for?
Yeah.
After the fact, yeah. Did we go out there and visit it in between, or is that like, uh, like they apply, and it's same with fencing? We don't, checks?
And building inspectors generally aren't, unless it's a blatantly, like, blatantly apparent, they're not finding illegal encroachments. So a lot of these times, these things are found after the fact, usually by neighbors or when a survey is conducted. And so that's kind of the situation we're in, is they made assumptions, because we're not talking about, like, a single-family home or a high-dollar structure where you have the foundation surveyed. So the encroachment's there. And I guess to speak to, um, Lynn's concern, approving the encroachment doesn't create a precedence for you. Because I, the, the thing, the only concern would be that we do nothing about it. Whether you approve it or deny it, it, it doesn't create a precedence, because at any point in time, the town can come back and say, hey, this must be removed. We need access to this. We're kind of just formalizing an encroachment.
So we're basically renting it for nine thousand dollars a year?
Basically, and, yeah.
And then I have other questions on top, once we, once we get through this part of it.
Where, where you're going with the fundamental problem is, the survey, I assume, was conducted at a time prior to purchase. So clearly, nobody bothered to look at the survey, see, to include the surveyor, that in fact, the former pad of a garage was illegally built into the town right of way, over the property line. That's where it's at. So they just assumed, they just assumed and builds another patio on top of it. That's where we're at. Bring the fence line into a garage that was probably there for, I don't know how long, this original house is.
I, 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 I would really like to have the opportunity to see it myself and spec.
Okay, can I ask a couple of other questions? So, because I think everyone knows, including Harper and everyone, like, we've been trying to figure out how to do this and the best way to do it. And submitting everything and, and doing it. So the other thing is, we've met with the landscapers of what it would be and how long it would take to rip everything up. How do we make sure if we do this and just rip it up, like, no encroachment license, all of that? Like, that we are, like, we have the stakes in the ground from the survey, and like, if the fence goes on that line, are we good? Like, I, we're trying to fix it. And like, I don't want to not have a fence up, because we live right where the bear lives. Like, all of those things, we have dogs, we have things like that. So we're trying to figure out how to move forward. So what would, if we, if we don't do the encroachment, we're definitely not spending ten thousand dollars a year. So we can, we can move past that. We're not asking for that much space. It probably, the math is probably three thousand dollars a year. But if we had, we have that option, because I have to still continue to figure out the solution. One is, if granted, do the, the encroachment amount? And as, as, I, I can't see who's talking, so I apologize. You know, and like you said, it's at any point the town could say, we're gonna stop that. Um, or if we rip everything up and move the fence in to what looks like the line where the survey stake is, how and who can we work with to make sure that everyone's on the same page? And it is, it's good to go when we do it. And do we need additional permits? I mean, we've already paid the permit twice, the plumbing. And they are gonna have to touch to reconnect, they're gonna have to disconnect underneath the top, underneath the cement, or between the cement slab and the, um, pavers. They're gonna have to reconnect where the plumbing goes for snowmelt and all of that. Like, how do we, we just want to move forward. We want to do the right thing. We want to move forward. So how do we go from here? Who do we work with?
Yeah, you're working with us now.
Yeah, so Juliet, my recommendation, and, um, let counsel speak more to this as well, but it sounds like you, or this solution that's before us right now is a rent, basically a rental agreement of this property for nine thousand dollars a year. And in the memo, it's, or in your application, you were stating that it might cost about ninety thousand dollars to remediate this.
Got.
In ten years, it, it seems like it's gonna be more cost-effective for you to remediate it now, as opposed to continuing.
Correct.
So that would be my recommendation.
And if we had to sell for any reason, we obviously can't sell it with anything like that over on the town. So exactly that. So then how if we go forward? And obviously, we'd need to go forward quickly, because we're gonna run into the snow and all that, you know, getting them like lined up. What do I have to do to make sure who, how we fix it? Yes, sorry.
Uh, Juliet, um, this is an ordinance. If the council approves the ordinance, this is the first reading. And then at the next council meeting is the second reading, in which case, if we approve it again, then you're done. You can go ahead and do your fence. That, that's what the process is.
No, but it's more than the fence. Like, I'm saying, we're gonna rip it up and no encroachment. Like, we're gonna, we're gonna withdraw the encroachment request.
Then you're gonna go with town staff to go through the normal process based on your property lines for the approval process in regards to the demo of the water, et cetera. And then whatever your plan is to do in that back area, if it requires a permit, they will let you know. If it doesn't, then life goes on.
Okay, so who do I talk to about that specifically? Because I, I'll call them tomorrow, because we're. Okay, okay, I, I know Madison. Okay, perfect. So go to Madison and say, this is our intention. Let us know what we, we need to provide you.
I'd, I'd also be in favor. I don't know if I could speak for everybody else, but it's refunding the fee for the snowmelt. If they end up tearing that up and getting rid of it as a goodwill gesture, if they're not gonna put snowmelt in.
No, 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 we're keeping the snowmelt. We're just going to have to move it up four feet.
I thought you were demoing the whole thing.
No, no.
I'll let Madison deal with it. She's smart and will know, knows everything.
So then the question is, you want to officially rescind your request for an encroachment agreement, correct?
No, sorry, I just wanted to clarify. It sounds like there are a few ideas floating around here, but I think, Juliet, I, I'm correct that you're wanting to approve this encroachment permit agreement, correct? For the space that, because you're planning to move the fence up so that the encroachment is less than it currently is, but still keep the encroachment that includes the snowmelt and the area on the cement pad. Is that correct?
Not, no, that's an option. And I, I want to figure out what the other option is. Because if we're going to rip it out to the four feet, to the line of the survey, and move the hot tub and recon, and rip up the, the upper part, that's the top part, and then reconnect everything back four feet and just be a hundred percent in our space, I want to know. And it sounds like I'd work with Madison on that to make sure. But I also want to do it very quickly, because we need to do all of this before the weather changes and all of that.
That is the other option. You'd have to go in and tear everything up and bring the, into compliance, and that's the.
No, no, and that's what I'm saying. And that is the other one. I just want to make sure, if that's the option, I decide. I'm gonna decide by tomorrow which one I'm going with. I just want to know if I decide, when we, when I let you guys know which way we want to go, how do I hit go on the construction?
We can continue this, but you're gonna lose two weeks on the season, okay? That's how it would work, because we can't address it. You're, we're going to a second and a third meeting before you can get approval of this.
Approval on, on.
Encroachment agreement.
No, no, no. If I, okay, I'm sorry if I'm not being clear.
I mean, I, I, it's, I mean, it's all irrelevant. It, the point of the matter is, either the council is willing to entertain a licensure of the encroachment, or they're not, and the staff can handle the outcome of that decision.
I don't think we need to get there if, in fact, she decides that it's economically better for her to just tear it up and comply.
Well, that's, it's also irrelevant, because they have the application here, we have the ask, we've drafted the ordinance, we've gone through this, so the council action is a decision.
Let's vote on it, and then we can drop.
And we'll deal with whatever the outcome is.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's not a hearing.
Well, I would think the neighbors would want some input.
But it's not a hearing.
About this, how about I withdraw it? Let's just say I withdraw the encroachment. Let's be done with that, and I'm gonna move on to how to correct it, all the way to compliance. Does that help?
Yes.
Okay, and then I can talk to Madison tomorrow about getting started on what to do.
We're gonna move on, Juliet, okay? Uh, I'll open it, since we're under an ordinance, um, procedure, I have to open it up to a public hearing.
Okay.
She doesn't want to do it.
She just withdrew it.
Okay. Okay, so we're through all the ordinance. Be done with it.
Oh, it doesn't require a public hearing.
The code doesn't require it.
Okay. Next item on the agenda?
Excuse me, sir.
Thirty-two, Series 2025, a resolution, various requests for, for release of a minimum lot width for eight eighty-six Main Street and eight ninety-two Main Street.
So the applicant, Tom Sullivan, uh, is requesting, uh, relief from the fifty-foot minimum lot dimension to allow for a subdivision at eight eighty-six and eight ninety-two Main Street, uh, to allow, uh, the subdivision of those two lots to eliminate the interior lot line and then combine, or subdivide them into three lots total. So, uh, just some background for you. Uh, all zone districts have dimensional limitations associated with them. Typically, when we think about that, we're talking about setbacks, uh, building height, lot coverage, et cetera. Um, very rarely do we talk about lot dimension, which is, is, uh, currently a requirement in our code. So, um, unfortunately, the code is a little confusing. I'm sure that's a shock to all of you. Uh, in the fact that, that the table within sixteen two forty, which provides all of the different, uh, dimensional requirements, mentions lot dimension. However, we don't actually have a definition for lot dimension. We have a definition for lot width. Uh, and that dimension, or that definition is, uh, the lot width means the average distance between the medians of the two side lot lines measured perpendicularly from one of the sides. So, uh, some additional context, uh, for the most part, zoning and, and the associated dimensional limitations were applied after lots in town have already been developed. That has left staff with many instances all over town where the minimum lot dimension is, is not adhered to. Uh, I put together three different, uh, figures within the staff report to hopefully help demonstrate all of the different ways, or all of the different areas just around this one, uh, just in this one area, not even looking at all over town, providing examples of the less than fifty-foot lot width dimension being adhered to. Uh, to complicate, uh, things further, uh, the code also has a separate section buried under supplemental regulations, uh, which is for frontage, which states that each lot in separate ownership, unless otherwise provided for in this chapter, shall have at least twenty-five lineal feet of frontage on a street right of way, either dedicated to the public or to a private association, or on a private road described by meets and bounds and reserved in perpetuity through private agreement for, to provide access to the lot. Each building devoted wholly or in part to residential use shall front on a street or road as described above, except when two or more such buildings are located on one lot, and the required frontage for each building cannot be provided due to the shape of the lot. The, but these buildings lacking street or road frontage shall front on a dedicated driveway, he's meant at least twenty-five feet in width and maintained in an unobstructed condition. So we have one section of code that says twenty-five feet essentially for frontage, and we have another se, uh, section of code that says fifty feet wide. And, uh, the frontage portion of the code has, has certainly been, uh, utilized, uh, for the subdivisions over the last several years. That's certainly been something I think that, that Scott and I have relied on. Whereas the dimensional width has been buried in this table and is a standard that we don't really look at, because we didn't remember it was there, unfortunately. Uh, so as I said, the, the proposal has two lots, having the interior lot line eliminated and then split into three. Lots one and two, uh, are proposed at a width of thirty-three, uh, point three four feet. Uh, and lot width, lot three has a width of thirty-three point three one feet, so total of a hundred divided into three.
So they both have fifty-foot frontage?
They both have fifty-foot frontage now. So, uh, overall, this is a request for relief of about thirty-three percent reduction in minimum lot width. Uh, you'll notice in your packet that, uh, the applicant did provide a conceptual site plan for how, uh, development could possibly occur on this property, um, respecting all setbacks, et cetera. So, uh, here I'm going to read a lot of stuff from the code, because I have to for the record, so please bear with me. Uh, so Section sixteen twenty-one six ninety variances, uh, provides, uh, purpose of provisions limitations in order to prevent or to lessen such practical difficulties and unnecessary physical hardships inconsistent with the objectives of this chapter as would result from strict or literal interpretation and enforcement. Variances from certain regulations may be granted. Cost or inconvenience to the applicant of strict or literal compliance with the regulation shall not be a reason for granting a variance. Number two, variances may be granted only with respect to the development standards prescribed for each zone, including lot area and site dimensions, setbacks, distances between buildings, height, density, site coverage, usable open space landscaping, site development, and parking loading requirements. Number three, the power to extend variances does not extend to the use regulations prescribed of, that's not in question today, sorry. Uh, so for the approval criteria, uh, before acting on a variance application, the zoning board of appeals, which the town council is acting on tonight, shall consider the following factors with respect to the requested variance. Uh, one, the relationship of the requested variance to other existing or potential uses and structures in the vicinity. Two, the degree to which relief from the strict or literal interpretation and enforcement of a specified regulation is necessary to achieve compatibility and uniformity of treatment among sites in the vicinity, or to attain the objectives of this chapter without grant or special privilege. Three, the effect of the requested variance on light and air distribution, population, transportation, and traffic facilities, public facilities, and utilities and public safety, and for such other, other factors and criteria as the zoning board of appeals deem applicable to the proposed variance. So that's the approval criteria. The findings that are required are that the zoning board of appeals, uh, shall make, uh, these following findings before granting the variance. Uh, one, that there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applicable to the site of the variance that do not apply generally to other properties in the same zone. Um, and I'm gonna respond to these as we go down, rather than kind of doubling back. So for that first one, as shown in the figures at the beginning of the staff report, the first three, uh, there are several instances in the, just the surrounding area, not even looking at all of town, where the minimum lot width isn't met. Not just from a historical plating standpoint, but also from more recent plats approved, such as the one for Lucera subdivision and I ninety-six Main Street. The application's letter of intent also has a list of properties throughout town that weren't pictured within that figure. Uh, finding number two, the exceptional or extraordinary circumstances of the site create a situation in which the strict literal interpretation and enforcement of the specified regulation would result in practical difficulty or unnecessary physical hardship inconsistent with the objectives of this chapter. Similar to, uh, what I just talked about, uh, due to both historical plating not matching up with current zoning regulations, as well as the enforcement of the twenty-five-foot frontage code, rather than the fifty-foot lot width minimum. Uh, within recent years, uh, we do have several examples within just the area, not even looking at all of town, uh, that could point, uh, to, that one could point to, which has allowed for a substandard lot width. This door clock configuration, minimum lot frontage, has been enforced at twenty-five feet, which presents the exceptional conditions for the property owners. Uh, finding number three, uh, that the granting of the variance will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to the properties or improvements in the vicinity, and will not result in substantial impairment to the purposes of this chapter. So except in the cases, case of this minimum lot with the proposed subdivision adheres to all other dimensional limitations, they have demonstrated that they can meet setbacks, um, and, uh, lot coverage as is, uh, put towards the South Town Residential Zone District. And staff also. And staff also believes that the proposed subdivision meets all of the criteria for minor subdivisions within chapter seventeen. Chapter seventeen and chapter sixteen are in- intrinsically linked, uh, given that one is subdivision and one is zoning, and you can't really have one without the other. Uh, so I have provided all ten, uh, applicable criteria for minor subdivision within the staff report if you would like to view that. Uh, and, uh, last finding, uh, finding number four, that there is no substantial impairment to the public that would result from the granting of the variance. The proposed subdivision still complies with the minimum lot frontage, twenty-five feet, and demonstrates the required safe public access to the lots on the conceptual site plan. And, uh, while this isn't a standard that y'all can rely on, I do want to provide some context in that due to the confusion of these two sections, and also in hopes of providing some flexibility, staff is recommending in the Minter and Forward project to get rid of minimum lot width altogether and just rely on frontage. Again, that's not something that's adopted in the code, so not really something that you can necessarily rely on, but I do feel like that's helpful context to give. Uh, so as I stated, y'all acting as the zoning board of appeals have to make positive findings for all of the four variance criteria. Staff suggests that the intention of the minimum lot width is to ensure proper access to a public street or right-of-way. Uh, this is, we believe, met with the adherence to the twenty-five-foot frontage requirement. So I did provide a reference within, uh, near the end of the second to last section, I believe, of the code or of my staff report, uh, different portions of both the code and the community plan where I believe this variance is supported. And then to recap, the planning commission recommendation and that review, overall, the, uh, planning commission, uh, voted to recommend unanimously, uh, they forwarded a recommendation of approval without conditions of the variance to the town council. Um, and the applicant is here, uh, so I won't recap what he said, um, because I'm, I'm sure that's part of his presentation.
Okay. So, uh, questions from the board?
Just reading in the packet, it looked like the applicant came in in March two thousand nineteen and was told that he was able to divide it into three parcels. Is that correct? All right.
Okay.
And the only issue with these lots is the frontage space.
Is the, is the dimension. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're all minimum five thousand square foot. They still adhere to that.
Is there issues with C dot on, uh, road access?
Uh, so if you'll look at that conceptual site plan, uh, they do show, uh, combined, uh, access for all three lots, so that the three lots will just access via one. And that's actually removing an access point, so we believe C dot will be happy with that.
Have a question, Seager.
Okay. Uh, Tom, did you have anything you wanted to present to us? That you okay with everything?
Yeah, I mean, the one thing, and I think that, you want me to get up?
Yeah, thank you. Name and address, please.
I'm Sullivan, one sixteen Nelson Avenue. You know, dimension doesn't mean width. Dimension means dimension. And where, in that table, it says max min. So is that the maximum dimension or is it the minimum dimension? I mean, it's just, we all know the code is poor and it's just one of those sections that's very poorly written. And, you know, I've been doing subdivisions in town for more than twenty years and this has never been applied. That said, I know how crazy our code is and stuff like that, so I double-checked with Scott before I purchased it, you know, it's a lot of money. And I'm bringing investors in, so it's not just my money, it's other people's. I'll be doubly careful with it, but, so I think that, that chart where it says max min on the top and then says fifty feet, you could very easily say, well, that's the maximum width of a lot. And if you look at the lots around there in the hair diagram, there are more lots that are less than fifty feet than more than fifty feet. So it's really confusing and I think that's probably why it hasn't been applied in the past, so.
Okay. Thanks, Tom. Hey, uh, since this is an ordinance, oh, no, this is a resolution. Okay. So, discussion?
No, I think, well, yes. It's in line with, but we just talked about the joint meeting completely, which is square footage, we're not getting wrapped around width and dimensions. It has the parking, it has the setbacks, it has the storage. Seeing the issues whatsoever.
I don't see any issue, I.
Okay. Well, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, approve resolution number thirty-two, series twenty twenty-five, resolution approving land use application variance twenty twenty-five dash O one for eight eighty-six Main Street and eight ninety-two Main Street.
Second.
Motion, my guestie, second by Tom. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Next, next item, resolution thirty-three, series twenty twenty-five, a resolution appointing Historic Preservation Commission members. Who wants to do this one? Where shall I?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we have four applicants for the two open seats. Um, so y'all get to do interviews tonight. We have, uh, Dan Brown, uh, we have Ken Halliday, Kelly Toon, and, uh, Tammy? Tammy Ramsey. Uh, so all four of those are here tonight to answer any questions that you may have. I have ballots, y'all get to vote, um, when y'all get to that point.
Okay. So, um, we'll start, um, with each individual coming up and just giving us a quick, speech, not a speech really, but just tell us, uh, how your approach to historic, uh, preservation and so forth. And we'll go through that, uh, quick interview process. If anyone wants to ask questions from the board, they can and you can answer those. Uh, so that, uh, we can go ahead and move to the first applicant, uh, Dan Brown.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm Dan Brown.
Okay. And, uh,
Sir?
Your address?
Uh, I go to Chickadee Lane, Gibson, Colorado.
Okay. And you, and you own property in town?
No, sir.
Okay, okay, great. Uh, okay. So, uh, what, what brings you here for your, which, what's your interest in, uh, the Historic Preservation Commission?
Well, my, uh, my higher education is in historic preservation, public history, which is architectural history, uh, archival science, museum science, um, historic preservation. There's several things that encompass that degree. And I really like a story and I love a story that has pictures. And so Minter has a story that has pictures. You know what I mean? Because I can go to several different towns and you can tell me anything, but can you point it out to me? You know what I mean? And so that's super important that you guys still have that. And I would love to do whatever I can do to, you know, help mentor move forward, but also, you know, retain the charm, which is the reason I'm standing in front of you guys tonight.
Okay. Uh, anybody have a questions for Dan?
Yeah, just thanks for applying.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Thank you for having me. I, I greatly appreciate it. I've been out here for a while and, you know, I come from Georgia and so.
I do too.
Just outside of Macon is where I'm from.
Savannah here.
I was the building official for Macon before I come out here. But, uh, but yeah, you know, my, my family history runs deep. Uh, I'm, you know, the history that surrounds where I'm from, I mean, you know, General Sherman stopped in every house. So, but, but yeah, I just thank you for having me here. I'll do my best to help you all out and, uh, yeah, it's, it's awesome. I love this town, it's great.
Thank you.
Question I wanted to ask a few of the.
Yeah, go ahead, Ray.
Beyond designating buildings, what are some things a town can do to build a appreciation and intertwine the town's history into our culture?
Sometimes it's not building in the vacant spots. You know what I mean? If you've got like some spots that you can use to kind of interact with the town that will kind of lead you through, it's like a museum. You always exit through the gift shop, right? So if you could take places that aren't built out and then put like a really, it doesn't have to be much of an infrastructure at all, but it could kind of lead people through, familiarize them with the area, let them fall in love with what they see, but you got to kind of lead them through it so they know that it's there.
Excellent.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay. Who's next? Ken?
Thank you, uh, Ken Halliday, A eleven Maine, five thirty-two. First of all, I'd just like to say it's, it's great to see four candidates in it. You know, CD interest last time, uh, was in our situation, so I think it's wonderful. So I'm here to answer any questions that you'd like to give. Maybe else, I'll make a comment about why I enjoy historic preservation. Primarily, I was involved in a project in San Antonio. We took an old eighteen-eighties brewery, a twenty-three acre project, and we had some very beautiful historic buildings there that were strategically important to telling the story of where we, we kept those. That whole process gave me appreciation of how important that is on the back end once you're fully developed and, uh, how it can help to create a sense of community for the area. And so that's just an experience that I have and, and, uh, I developed a passion around historic, uh, preservation as a result. And so, uh, I've been serving for a few years now. Uh, it's been, it's been awesome. Uh, I think we're getting close to a place where we'll have an opportunity finally in this town, I think, to hear from consultants, et cetera, that we've engaged, to tell us, you know, here are the top ten properties in town that ought to be protected and here's why, and they're strategically important. And I think it, as a town, we ought to make a decision on that so we can alleviate the anxiety that, that is around town on what the implications of historic preservation are. Is my house historic? Is it important, uh, et cetera? Uh, especially for folks that are trying to sell properties. It creates a cloud on title that's just a big unknown. And so I look forward to the report that we're going to get and I look forward to, uh, seeing what we can do with that.
Good.
Any questions?
Um, do you want to say something briefly about the Myers Barn and your role in preserving that?
Well, Rob, no. We're, we, well, we have, uh, designated the Myers Barn, a few of us, and it was, we nominated it, it was approved, uh, and so it's a historic structure. And we're working on, uh, a process to move it to Little Beach Park, uh, to become a multi-use or concession, uh, building that would be used in connection with the Little Beach, uh, amplifier. And we're really excited about it and we're, uh, waiting for Rob to tell us where to put it. And, uh, we're getting very, very close to that, like within a week or so of actually going out there and staking it. I don't know it'll happen this year because we have to do the foundation that we got to disassemble, reassemble, and we have to bring in the talent to do all that. We've got the money raised, we've got all that. It's just, we're running out of time to do it this year, so it might be next year, but that's okay.
I was going to ask the same question, but since you mentioned it.
Sure.
How do you make a designation desirable for a property owner?
Well, that's, that is the sixty-four dollar question that we're wrestling with. We thought maybe we could come up with some variances or various things. That got shot down for good reason, I think, because a lot of people think that, that HPC is architectural review. We're not, we just make recommendations to council, right, on what's historic and what's not historic. DRB is the body that decides how a renovation is going to be done. So I think that there's a lot of misunderstanding, um, about, um, the role of HPC in the town. And so, um, am I answering your question?
Maybe clarifying the role of HPC is what you're trying to say?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's important. Uh, we did put out, um, one of the things we thought of, uh, first of all, the town doesn't have money, so that's one way you can do this sometimes is you give some incentives. Now, you can go to the state, uh, at the Pearl Brewery. We, we did not go after the federal, uh, tax credits, et cetera, because they would require us to do things that actually, we felt like were contrary to the integrity of the buildings that we were trying to preserve, such as taking off a beige paint off of the brick that was destroying the brick. They wouldn't allow us to do that because it was in the period of significance. I won't bore you with that, but, um, so I think that, uh, the kinds of things that we also think that you, we can do is, um, is, uh, make a clear statement of what we think is strategically important in town. And I think if we can do that, we can create a conversation about the history of the town, the importance of these buildings. And, you know, beyond, um, it not being torn down, what is the implication of being designated historic in Minter? I mean, you still go to DRB, you still make your case, et cetera. You just can't tear it down because we, as a community, have decided that that's strategically important to telling, I think what you said is exactly right, telling the story of the town and giving the people the experience of the town and having the community be proud of that. So, any other questions?
Thank you, Ken.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, is Tammy Ramsey here?
Hi. My name is Tammy Ramsey and I live at eight fifty Main Street, uh, unit number two. Uh, my husband and I moved here about three and a half years ago. We have two sons that are at Colorado School of Mines. So we moved here, uh, like I said, three and a half years ago, um, fell in love with the town about five or six years ago. So when we did decide to move here, we actively sought a, a property here in Minter and it's been wonderful. We love the town. Um, and I, I'm really interested in, I, I know this, just since we have lived here, there have been, uh, a lot of changes and there's growth going forward. But I want to be able to maintain that charm that I fell in love with, you know, several years ago and being the reason that I moved here. So I've been on many committees, I'm a retired educator, um, team player and would love to, you know, be a part of this and, and, you know, help maintain the charm of this town.
Okay. Any questions for Ken?
I'll do the same one. I wanted to ask everyone the same question. Yeah, well, my, the main question was how, you know, beyond, um, physical preservation of things, like how do you preserve the importance of history and the town's culture and community, um, outside of physical structures?
Well, I think one of the things that, you know, when you're, when you move here, when you're new to here, you don't necessarily know the story and so, you know, you have to seek out the story for, um, you know, the town of Minter, why it, why it came about, you know, what, what its history is. And so I'd like for everybody to know that history. I would like for people to come into the town and understand, you know, the, um, you know, how it came about and, you know, what the turntable is, what, what it was and what it's, what it's going to be. And so I, that, that's what I would, would hope that we could do going forward.
Thank you, Tammy.
I asked a question that was asked the candidate, how do you incentivize homeowners to pursue historic preservation of their property?
Well, I think, you know, there, there are regulations and there are, you know, that, that when, when you're buying a home, you have to, you know, full disclosure, you know, this is, this is how old this property is. This is, you know, what, um, you know, what, what it brings, you know, to the town and what it would look like, where what it, why we wouldn't want you as a, as a new homeowner to change, you know, what, what our history is and, and what, what it has to offer. So I hope that answers the question.
We're still in search of the.
Yeah, we're, we're all looking for it.
Thank you, Tammy.
It might be word pride.
Kelly?
Kelly Toon by thirty-one Main Street. So I quickly, I started a love for architecture at a young age and went to, graduated Cal Poly for design, architectural design and, uh, moved here. And ironically, I was educated in very contemporary, modern architecture. Ended up buying a house in Red Cliff after I helped, uh, a neighbor design, um, a remodel there. And, uh, it was really going through Red Cliff's Room History Museum up there, seeing the artifacts, seeing the old photos, that it really, for the first time in my life, I started liking old. And it really, for the first time in my life, I started liking old buildings. And it was really the stories and the lives that a piece of contemporary architecture can't give you. Doesn't, you know, you can use the word history or building, but it also has a soul in that, it's from the people that lived there. That they didn't teach in school. They taught us about dates, famous architects, famous buildings, why it's famous, but they didn't really talk about the soul of the building and explain why certain things are loved and adored and become famous. And it might be a famous person that lived there, it might be a famous event that happened there. But this town doesn't have a whole lot of those. It was a working town, it was the poorest town that existed. Red Cliff was crown jewel of the county. That's where the rich people lived. Times have changed. And Minter doesn't even have many photos that exist because the people couldn't even afford film for the cameras, and there is no reason to take photos. So just finding that old photo, to me, is, you know, finding a needle in a haystack or a gem. And ever since my first remodel of a house in Minter, which was done behind Kirby's, and restoring it to its, I think we did as good a job as we could restoring it, even keeping the old windows and keeping the theme of, the feeling of the house. And there's something about just these old houses that people love even. You can train people to enjoy modern architecture, but it just doesn't have a soul. And that's what I've learned after living here for, in the valley for 30 years and in Minter for over 22. And the thing that sold me on the town was talking to the neighbors while I was building the house or remodeling it. And, and I still love doing that to this day. One of my clients is Pat Nola, and she works with seniors up at the seniors' center. And every chance I get, which is rare, I talk to her, and we talk about mutual neighbors and common and trying to get stories down and stories recorded. And that's kind of what led me on the crusade to save the Myers Barn, was Jerry and Ralph were clients of mine, and I got to know them and got so many stories out of Ralph. And I can share those with other people and pass them down to newcomers, and I feel proud about that. Ralph did pass, and he never talked about saving the, you know, the barn, but it was, all those stories is what I love about this town. It's not just the buildings, even though it's one of the few places people drive 15 miles an hour just because their heads are turning and looking at, because it's different than all the other Vale cities. And I've been on the board, and we have since the beginning, and we've had a few stumbles, and I kind of, we have one major report coming out on historic significance. It's the historic audit by Ron Fadanka that he mentioned. And hopefully that's gonna be done later this year, and I would love to be involved in trying to see what the next step is when we get those, the audit from him and try to figure out what to do with his information. And I was, I helped interview him, and I believe in his passion for this town and the old buildings. And just would like to continue seeing that. And I am typical pink that we have people interested, and I still say, hey, come to the meetings. And Lynn Teach, who's been, she's like been our only person at the meetings, and now she's some board member. And if I'm not reelected, I still will be passionate about trying to save what makes this town and try and save the stories and the buildings. But it's mainly the people that are the important thing, this whole equation, and the stories.
Cool. Thank you, Kelly. Brian, do your thing?
Well, yeah, I mean, you mentioned it, right? So how do you, how do you preserve those stories? It sounds like a lot of them, you know, people are moving on or we're in danger of losing all that stuff.
I'm trying to, I love to work with a lot of the seniors and everyone that I do talk to. I, I tell them one of the most important things to do. I know time's limited with everybody in this valley, whether you're old or, or young. But one of the best things my mom did, and this goes for everyone, is that when I was in architecture school, she, I had a project on, I had a report on three generations of my family living in their house and what it was like, not only the house, but the feeling, the lifestyle. I had never moved out of my house. That was built in 1965, and, you know, condo, stucco, horrible, cheap condo. But my mom wrote down 10 pages of information and stapled pictures that she found of each house, pulled as much that she could remember when she was growing up in Nessus Park in Denver. And I've now found like three of the houses that we lived in. I didn't have the addresses, but I knew the area. And that's probably the most valuable thing I own. And I tell people to, for their future kids to do that. And it's a way of passing down the stories when you may only have a photo if you don't. And so I've been telling a lot of the seniors in town that I, I run into, just take time and write down everything you can remember and hopefully pass it on to your kids or someone in the town or, you know, a neighbor. And just to keep those memories, stories. And luckily, we had Bill Burnett that wrote a book about it. He just, he wrote it from a plumber's point of view, which is hysterical. But he has a wonderful book about the mine, and that's one of the greatest things, I think, that any president of Minter has done, is actually just write it down. And it doesn't have to be perfect, but my mom just, you know, notebook paper and stapled photos to it. It's one of my greatest treasures.
Thank you, guys.
Just one. Am I right that, to extent that any of our historic buildings have been restored, are going to be restored? Haven't you been involved in almost all of them and actually doing the work?
I've been working with Tom Sullivan for over 20 years and your, your family, which is what got my start.
Larry Stone, Larry Stone, and the Myers Barn, you've committed a labor for that.
Like, the fun thing for me is finding a name written on a board of the, you know, from the Fleming Lumber Company or the Coke Lumber Company that existed in, in the rail yard here, and then finding out how that connects with the cemetery and the names in the cemetery. To me, it's this interwoven, and I enjoy getting the homeowners excited. So I'm gonna keep continuing, whether I'm on the board or not, to try to preserve as many houses as I can and encourage people to save what they can. Even if a house is being demolished, trying to save pieces of the house that could be used in future projects, which is one of my goals, is to do that. Or for the homeowner to have a preservation wall that piece of the old house can go into the new house as a memory and artifacts and try to salvage as much material from any buildings coming down, which I'm currently working on free in town right now, trying to save everything we can. And my dream is to get a history museum in the Myers Barn where we can hang anything that we have. And I spend my free time on eBay just buying up anything I can find on Minter.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thanks.
Is there a way we can expand the board by two members?
Let's see. I think there's a, some kind of question.
Well, that was a... I think we would have to do more than that tonight.
HPC shall be composed of five voting members with the option of town council to appoint additional non-voting members to be utilized in an advisory capacity, all of whom have demonstrated interest and competence with or knowledge of the town's history and/or historic preservation.
There you go.
So if you would like to do that, then I would need y'all to vote on who would be the voting members and leave the other two members to be advisory blank, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Y'all ready?
So everybody pick your best choice, and then let the dude be advisory.
Okay, this is on board, take the top one, pass it down, and as well. Thank you.
You might not have a pen?
I could use...
We see. I just got a little piled up. You're just gonna want these. Thank you. My name, anything for Earl, just make one down.
All right, I got Lynn Fire.
Oh, I got Tom Priest.
Oh, well.
Madison, do you want to see like a one, two, four kind of thing, or what's...
Um, if you'll just make the marks next to the two that you would like to be voting, leave the other two blank, we'll make those the advisory.
Yeah. Gusty Canaccas.
Hopefully we voted the same, because I got yours.
Oh. Okay, does it matter who we are?
Can I, can I make sure Jay, you get that in a minute, please?
You're trying to vote twice. That sounds like a good book time.
Your, your voting record is blank. So I do request that the...
That's on a psilocybin event.
That's, that's next meeting.
Sorry, Gusty.
I can give, I can give new ones if you'd like, or if y'all just wanna cross names out.
Yeah.
Y'all are done, y'all can pass them down to Earl. I'll get them from him, and I will tally vote.
There we go.
Thank you.
Worked fast.
They sure did.
Okay, the results are that Ken and Kelly will be the voting members and Tammy and Dan, sorry, will be the advisory members.
Excellent. Welcome. Congratulations all.
Appreciate it. See, when you participate, good things happen.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. So I think that's a good result.
I think so, too.
Be the addition.
Yeah, I know, it's excellent. I don't wanna move on, anyway. Uh, okay, next item on the agenda is resolution.
Make a motion, Earl, on the resolution.
Oh, my God, yes.
If y'all would vote to amend the resolution to include first the two to be voting and then Tammy and Dan to be advisory, I would appreciate that.
Yes, we can.
I'll make a motion with an amendment to the Town Minter in Colorado, Resolution Number 33, Series 2025, with the amended addition of two advisory members in accordance with our code. Resolution Appointing Historic Preservation Commission Members, voting members will be Ken Holiday, Kelly Toon. Advisory members will be Dan Brown and Tammy Ramsey.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Tom, second by Gusty. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Welcome, welcome. Okay, now moving. Next item is Resolution 34, Series 2025, a resolution to approve a formal comment letter regarding the environmental assessment for the Avon DeGilmann 115 kilovolt transmission line project. And who's doing this?
That would be me. I decided, I decided to draft a resolution for you all, just to be really clear. We have till August 20th, which would be the Wednesday after next, to submit formal comment. Basically, this is an environmental assessment, so prior to, either, either out of an environmental assessment, either you determine that there will be a significant impact or there will not be a significant impact. If there is a significant impact, then you go to doing an environmental impact statement. If there's not, then you do a Fonzie, a finding of no significant impact. So my assumption is that Holy Cross is trying to get towards a no significant impact, and the Forest Service is recommending Alternative Four as the way to get to that pathway, which is undergrounding from Dow Junction to about Two Creek.
Two Elks.
Two Elks. Thank you. The majority of the area that we have, I guess, development in single-family homes, but does not include the area north of Dow Junction, which I know there are some concerns about that from residents.
North of Dow Junction.
From the interconnection point with Holy Cross Energy to Dow Junction, that part would still be elevated above ground.
Did you extend that far?
I thought Minter started Dow Junction.
Yeah, I thought Alternative Four was from Two Elk to Underground until it got over to the Dow Junction parcel that we're hoping to get.
You had, you sent me that map. Uh, maybe, well, let's see.
There's a portion that's above ground from...
Eagle Vale to Dow Junction.
Yes, yes, that's what I was just clarifying.
But we don't have jurisdiction on that.
No, we do not. But I, you know, I was talking with Amanda Muir. She's just one of those residents that's brought up that concern of the impacts of that section. I just wanted to convey that to...
Okay, so, yeah, it's connecting to the power lines that...
Yes, yes.
Fire. Okay, got you, yeah.
That's county's issue.
Okay.
But is there any questions or, or comments about the letter or the resolution, or any concerns?
No, I think, I think I'm thrilled with Alternative Four, that's for sure. And all this, it's a much better option for us than we thought we could get.
I've reached out to the Town of Vale, had a conversation with their manager, reached out to Avon, had a conversation with their manager, the email, and the mayor, just saying where we are and what we were hoping for, and if they could submit comments in support of the alternative, we'd appreciate that. And I also reached out to Commissioner Schur, just to kind of get that on the county's radar as well.
Do we have any inkling whether Holy Cross would accept Alternative Four?
I don't personally. I don't have that inkling. If it, if it results in a finding of no significant impact, I mean, that would probably save them a lot of time and money, but I, I don't know.
They, they do, they do support it, yes.
They do would support it?
Yes, they would support.
It's been Minter's position all along that we wanted it buried from this, our boundary line in Dow Junction to Two Elks. And this would be great, so.
Yeah, so it was great. Yeah, they, they...
Well, my only question on that, I know we left it at, there were a few issues in regards to the actual routing, as far as underground or above ground. So do we have, I'm, I'm just curious with Alternative Four, the actual routing proposed underground, since we told them to go talk to UP and that caused them to have a bit of a connection? Since that makes the most sense to just...
Yeah, they're...
I know they won't. I'm just curious what the routing was.
That, that map that you had sent me.
I'm looking at the, and Jay, I don't know if you have access to, or I could forward it to you.
No, they were originally gonna cut it right through the town.
What are we looking for?
The, the maps in the environmental... The, uh, the maps in the environmental assessment, I just forwarded it to you.
Okay.
Let me just clarify on the page, but the routing, I think, avoids the Union Pacific Yard deliberately, was my understanding.
Correct, correct.
We've come a long way since they, uh, originally would only agree to.
I can. I can verbally outline it if you want, I think I can find a map pretty quickly.
Yeah, I've got it right here.
Um, it, it comes from Avon, and it goes underground basically on the hillside above the, uh, where the offices are at Dow Junction, and then it stays underground, it comes to daylight, but it doesn't. Underneath one of the bridges as it crosses the river, and then it stays underground all the way through town to about, it's past Ms. Pearson's house, which is out of town, and it's about halfway down the cap on the other side of the river, though, of that, that. And then it, it goes into Beldon Canyon using the same pole route that exists right now. If they, in, in certain areas, there's existing lines, those will be taken down and put on to the new poles. So there'll only be one line of poles going, uh, and then it goes through Beldon Canyon, and then up from Beldon to the power station at Gilman. But basically through, all the way through town, it is underground, and the only, the only.
Where in town is it underground?
Okay, I'm gonna send you the map.
Okay.
Goes right along, basically, be the bike path and Taylor and, uh, Minter Road.
Holy Cross's original position was they could never afford to do this.
Yeah, Holy Cross did not wanna bury this at all, to begin with.
This is pretty significant.
It'll be on the way, you'll have it in a minute, gonna dig it up, everything, just gotta do.
If you guys want, I can pull up a map, I think I can do it relatively quickly.
From the maps, it's, it's following Minter North Road on the southwest side, and then it's crossing, it's, it's following that all the way, and then it's crossing over right at the edge of the townhomes, crossing under that road, and then back underground off the, uh.
You'll have a map, and just, if you haven't gotten a map now, it'll be there in a second.
All right. I'm just looking at what just got done.
Yeah.
And now we're talking about Taylor, baby.
Yes.
And now, so we're gonna start trashing that again to run. That's all.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Tom, that's actually a pretty correct statement, but they will put everything back as or better than it is right now.
As long as there is efficient as XL, I'm great, Jay.
Okay, so, uh, we have a resolution to have to consider, I have no problem with getting that approved and submitted.
Public comment?
It's a resolution, but yes, we always, we always.
I had to write a letter in the paper, because I was a lot of public comment regulations.
That's cause I like to.
Yeah, you can come on, come on up.
No, no, Rob said we, we, oh, nevermind.
We wanna hear your comment.
So, I mean, my name's Amanda Mayor, four-one-four Eagle Street, if you guys remember, there used to be a Holy Cross working group that was made up of Woody, Lynn, myself, uh, Lauren, who was an attorney, who, we spent a lot of time on this project. I mean, hours and hours every week for, until they paused it right before COVID, so, you know, we were in it to win it, meeting with Holy Cross Board as such, you know, what is on this screen is, is pretty close to what we agreed upon at the very, right before they stopped pursuing it before COVID, they did slightly adjust the line, so it's popping up a little bit before, I think, the, we had it buried all the way to behind the gun range, um, but it's now popping up a little bit before, and I think that's to adjust for them moving it closer to Dow underground. What I wanna be, make sure we're on record as, as good neighbors and stewards of this much larger community, is that we still have above-ground transmission lines popping up next to our local HPS, Home Peak Middle School, which is a hub for our kids, it's a hub for sports, a hub for summer school. Transmission lines are not insulated, they have the buzz, they, you know, we know what they've caused in California, that's all been well documented. And so, while I hundred percent support Rob's letter, more than hundred percent, I also think this makes us need, as a community, to put on the gas and reach out to our neighbors, and make sure that they're well aware of what is about to go down, and they need to be hitting the commentaries, making their voices heard, because this isn't the best solution. Um, and the pieces that I wanna make sure that you guys are well aware of is that HPS, in terms of wildfire, that is our staging area, so if there's a wildfire in this area for Vale, Town of Vale, and Minter, HPS was our staging area, and with this going in, when those transmission lines go in, they can no longer do helicopters into HPS, it takes away our staging area, that utmost up-valley staging area, and it pushes us down into the Avon and Edwards area from a fire staging, and that is a big deal when you're talking about getting Town of Vale out and Minter out on one single pathway. It's a big deal, and that's just.
So HP, I'm, I'm confused.
Home State Peak. Middle School is, yeah, Old Batamount High School, is that football field? The transmission line, the first line pops up on Forest Service land adjacent to that, adjacent to that football.
Just east.
And I know that they have committed to.
In Malloy?
No, 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 uh, outside of Dow.
Eagle Vale.
Oh, Eagle Vale.
Eagle Vale.
Oh, I, okay.
Yeah, 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 no, this way.
I got it.
No, and it pops up right next to that high school, old high school, now middle school, which takes away that ability for that middle school to be staging up-valley, because they're high-transmission, uninsulated power lines. And so, like, I, again, I totally agree with everything that we're doing from the letter, but I feel like as a community, they were much larger than just Minter, and we need to be going out and speaking to the Avon, speaking to the town, going to Eagle County Commissioners in person, and getting all of this, because that's the only way to make Holy Cross listen even more than they listened before, and they are trying their best, it's a money thing for them, and they're just, they're, they're.
And Avon has to oppose this?
So the original path, about twelve, fifteen years ago, actually went up and over Wildridge, and Avon, um, enforced their ten forty-one and declined, uh, access for the utility company, Holy Cross.
So where's Eagle Vale and the Town of Vale on this, since this isn't?
Eagle Vale is unincorporated Eagle County, and everything they've put on is now unincorporated Eagle County, so it's, it's by design, this is the only municipality that has to actually, uh, take a, that they have to go through.
So to the county commissioners to check?
Yep, the county commissioners could maybe step in, but most of it's on Forest Service land in Minter. And again, that's by design, there is paths up through Town of Vale, that Town of Vale was like, no way, that Vale Resort stepped in, not. Again, they had, uh, this went all the way through Avon Town Council, and they issued their ten forty-one, this is like, this is the least resistant path. So that's all I wanna say, is like, let's just put on the gas until August twentieth, get this letter, but then also, like, I don't know if there's a chance to reinstate that working group that was previously done, but, like, I just, I've, I've been passionate about this for seven years now, like, following this. So we need to the board.
I think, I mean, I think what we can do is, and I did email Commissioner Schur, but I was not aware of this, this area, obviously, it's outside of the town, but I think we can work together quickly in the next day or two, to get some correspondence out to Avon and the county commissioners, and just say, hey, this is something that your residents in this unincorporated area may not fully understand that this will be an impact, we just wanna highlight that as one of our residents brought it up, and, and we can get that communicated, because I know the timeline on the comment is tight, two weeks.
It is.
And, and I can talk to the fire district about it.
Yes, and I, I'm gonna make appointment with the Vale Town Fire Chief, too, and then also, um, the Eagle Vale Homeowners Association was very vocal last time, and then the other piece, I think that reason they ended up having to pause was potentially because the school district stepped in, um, the head of operations of the school district, trying to understand the impacts. So, I'm just, and again, we are good neighbors, and I wanna continue being good neighbors, um, and making sure that, um, I don't think there's a lot of awareness out there that this is happening again.
What's the deadline again?
The twentieth, so two weeks.
Okay.
So we'll try to do what we can in that.
Thank you for letting me speak on a resolution.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I just wanna dovetail on, uh, Jeff Armistead, sixteen thirty-two Main Street.
I don't think that's on, is it? Yes, it's on.
Now it sound more important. I just wanna also bring up the fact that is, this started as a half-mile area, and now it's a lot better, obviously, than it was, but does anybody care about the fact that it's popping out of the ground right at the shooting range?
Right at what?
Does that, I mean, uninsulated, high-transmission lines, if there's something to shoot at, people shoot at it, don't they? I don't use the shooting range, but.
I have a secret hope, if we don't publicize it to, uh, that maybe that would be the very good thing to get rid of the shooting range.
Well, I know, but I, I don't wanna hope there's not a fire someday down there again, right, we've already had fires down there from people doing dumb things, and I just, like, what would it take to go another quarter mile, obviously, it was a million dollars a mile, or six million dollars a mile when they were here five, six years ago, quoting those underground stats to us, but I just, something about popping out of underground right at the shooting range, to me, seems kind of like a recipe for a disaster, and we don't, we all know that we're one fire away from not having any water.
Oh, I know. But I'm hoping that that would be just the thing they needed to get rid of it.
Honestly, they're not gonna get rid of it if they don't find a place. They gotta have a place, if we just do away with the gun range, it's gonna be free range for everybody out there shooting, and we don't want that. Just to say that Minter got rid of a gun range, I mean, gotta have an alternate site, there's gotta be a place for it.
Well, I know there's been a lot of work done to, to clean it up and move it, or not move it, and, and, you know, there's the letter that went out today, talking about there may be an emergency closure of it, coming this weekend with stage two fire restrictions coming, that came from Leanne at the Forest Service just today, um, so it may take a little, if we, we are gonna probably go to stage two, and then, and then they probably will close, to have an emergency closure, it may not come in time this weekend, but it's coming, I think. But it just seems like if there's something we can do to advocate for maybe burying it a little further somehow, just so that people aren't shooting at it.
At least get on the other side of Two Elk.
Out of gun range.
Yeah, on the other side of Two Elk, that would be out of the range, and.
Yeah, and I.
Across the river.
Something, just a little further, just.
I mean, when we first did this, we advocated that, and we have a connection, why can't you just run it underground, parallel to the XL gas lines, all the way over the ridge line to Gilman? We got the usual load of crap, and it comes out, uh, price per square foot.
Right, yeah, and it was the cost per mile, and we know that they don't, they don't, they're not gonna care about our gun range, you know? We're the ones that have to care about it, and the dangers, so I'm just stating what seems like the obvious.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yep.
One question is, this is Forest Service property, where they're really popping out, and Forest Service has already made their comment, and obviously, they're moving forward with this two-week. So Forest Service has already comes up on the plan to leave above-ground peace, correct?
I think if we came back and asked for more, they would just shut it down.
I'm curious what they have to say, and who we could talk to in Forest Service to light a fire, no pun intended.
Okay, but, uh, anyway, back to the resolution.
I know we called the Forest Service ever factoring in the gun range in any of their analysis, earlier analysis.
Well, I don't think they're taking into account a act of the human stupid, stupidity, they're taking it act of nature, oh.
One more thing, so, like, you, Rob, you said, if they, if the Forest Service's opinion is no significant impact, and there was ever a fire from a guy shooting, or a woman shooting, the power line, and it caused a fire, I would say it's a pretty significant impact.
Have had fires out there with them.
I think more of the elevated power lines over that area. That was the area we pushed back on.
Yeah.
And their answer, if I remember correctly, was it was insulated, now I'm hearing it's not.
No, it's not insulated, transmission lines.
And that was their original position, based on the height of the towers, and the disposition of the lines running over to Gilman, so, for what it's worth, and that can be refuted by the former Action Group lead over here, uh, but I distinctly remember that during our committee meetings with them. So, curious how that changed.
They're insulated when they're under the ground, like, they have to be in order to, like, they, so, like, when they bury them, they insulate those ones under, which is weird. The ones that are above, because they're so high up off the ground, they don't, and then they also require the clearcutting on each side of the poles, so.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, we'll go with Alternative Five.
Okay, do you want to send a letter or not? I'm just trying to move on.
Well, I mean, if we don't send a letter, we've made no comment.
And that would not be good.
That would be very bad.
Because then we don't really have a right to say anything during any further, because this is like scoping, and if you don't comment during scoping, then you don't have a lot of standing further down to say, well, we didn't like this, because it's like, well, you didn't make a comment.
Just, I'm just curious, how far distant is the tower before the shooting range starts, is it like?
The map is like a yellow star, it's very not.
It's, yeah.
Specific.
Um, yeah, I, I couldn't shoot that.
Basically, they're coming above ground, so they can cross Two Elk.
Can we agree to submit this letter with a caveat that we, we ask for special consideration and management around the shooting range? And we wanna, or we wanna highlight the risks.
Around them.
Uh, around the shooting range?
Well, I would, I would go one step further, we just amend the letter, since obviously we have a two-week period, we need to get it in. So the two key areas that are already raised is the staging site for fire response and the shooting range, so in both cases, we're not in favor for a variety of reasons, for above-line transmission until past Two Elk.
Is, is there required to have, what, fifteen or one hundred and fifty wide vegetation for you to go around where the hole comes out?
Yeah, this is where they.
How that works.
But that's, but that's where the Forest Service, where they start to become a problem, because where they're coming up, they won't have to do anything until they hit Two Elk.
Uh, Terry, Terry Armistead is online right now, I'd like to hear her comment, Terry, can you hear me?
I should probably leave.
Thanks, Madison, thanks, Mr. Mayor, um, Terry Armistead, sixteen thirty-two South Main. Um, I'm in such support of this resolution, thank you, Rob, for drafting this, and, um, council for supporting this, I mean, this has been a long journey with Holy Cross, and, um, I would just urge everyone to keep your hackles up a little bit, um, till the end. Um, but I, I did have a question for Brian Rodine, if he can talk a little bit, because it's hard to see on the maps for Alternative Four, but, um, how does this affect the bike park in the future? I know that BVMTA had issues in Avon with the digging and redigging of, of lines there that affected bike trails. So, Brian, do you know a lot about that?
I don't, I do know the original map drew it right through the bike park.
Yeah, that's what I remember.
This one does go up and around through the mini-mile, and that mini-mile was built around the pipeline access, too, so it does, looks like, look like it, and then it, it doesn't involve, the problem with Avon was that they needed to put in access road through all of the West Avon Preserve trails.
Okay.
This is not in an area where they'd be doing it, like, the map doesn't show an access road in that spot, so I'm sure there'd be a little disturbance, but it, it looks like they addressed it, it goes over the cemetery, like, up and around the cemetery.
Okay.
And up on that, um, I guess that's the east side of the bike park before coming back down.
Okay, and then they would be subject to any ten forty-one regulations you'd wanna propose, such as, you know, doing it during elk, like, you know, not doing it during that winter elk, uh, calving, and et cetera?
Yes, we do have a ten forty-one process for utilities.
Okay.
That was your question.
Yeah, just that we would be keeping in mind, you know, holding them to the same standards that we hold everybody else in town, which is, you, you can't do anything up there during.
You got it, Terry.
All right, thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number Thirty-four, Series Twenty- I'll make a motion to approve Resolution number thirty-four, Series twenty twenty-five, Resolution supporting Alternative Four in the Holy Cross Energy Hundred and Fifteen Kill, or Kill Bolts, Avon, Gilman. Transmission line environmental assessment.
I'll second it.
Motion by Eric, second by Lynn. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
opposed? Okay. Next, we have discussion direction items, Mintern Forward Land Use Code update. You're on, Scott.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, and for the audience's benefit, the Council and Planning Commission held a work session earlier this evening from four to five thirty to discuss where the, the town and the staff are at with regard to the Mintern Forward Code Update Project. Specifically, we talked mostly about the latest area of focus, which is our proposed new zone districts in the town. In that work session, we just kind of recapped not only the, the larger order goal of this project, which really has a lot to do with simplifying the code and consolidating zone districts, things that have come from previous policy decisions, the community plan and the towns, the town council's strategic priorities. We spent quite a bit of time talking about proposed changes within the new zone districts to allowed uses, specifically looking at the councils and the planning commission's preferences for taking things like accessory dwelling units and allowing those to be uses by right, rather than limited reviews, which they are now. Things like duplexes would also be uses by right. So we, we really kind of got into the weeds on that particular issue. I believe we got some good direction. We also talked about, it is in a similar manner, dimensional limitations. So along with new zone districts and new allowed uses within those zone districts, some of which are aimed at perhaps making housing development and affordable housing more easy in the town, or at least a little more streamlined. We talked about dimensional limitations, things like setbacks, lot coverage by buildings, building height. So that was the purpose of the work session. I think there's more work to be done. There might be additional work sessions in the future where we need to come back and talk about similar items like parking standards and how those affect different types of development, residential or commercial, affordable housing, those types of things. But again, I feel like we did come away from that work session with some great direction. And I think that is what we're trying to do right now is to formalize that direction, make sure we heard you correctly, so we can move forward. Staff, Madison and I and Matt Farrer, Western Slope Consulting, he has been absolutely invaluable and instrumental in keeping this project. I wouldn't say on, on time, we're, we're behind as usual, but we're making progress. We've, we've completed several modules or articles in the new code. We've spent most of the summer focusing on zone districts. We've held open houses and hopefully made sure the public knows that we're looking at new zone districts. The Planning Commission has completed its review of our new zone districts. Madison and, and Matt and I are now working not only to finish that section up, at least for now. We're starting to look at development standards. We will take a harder look at our definitions that go into the code. Those are the things that we still need to complete moving into the fall. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions. I don't know how you want to handle this going forward, Mr. Mayor, if we need more discussion on any topics or just circle back and make sure we heard you.
We did give you directions on some items, I believe. If, so we, we just need to just say direction was given on those items, or I believe it was ADU acceptance and.
So if you don't mind.
Go ahead, please, Madison.
She's got notes.
What I wrote down, and since we do operate a direction from three of you, I have direction from three of you. And if you'd like, I can read them out. To allow ADUs by right, I have direction from three of you to allow duplexes by right. And I have direction from four of you to allow multifamily by right. So we didn't really get into the specifics of which zone district.
I don't think we need that kind of detail.
But, but yeah.
And so, and we just have to include that in the motion, so.
Well, it's discussion direction, so there's no motion. Thank you. And then we didn't get a ton of direction, I didn't feel, on the dimensional standards side of things. Because that was the last dimensional standards. Those last like fifteen minutes kind of rushed and then we started talking about smaller lot sizes, but we didn't really get very far with the twenty-five hundred versus five thousand. So while that was a started discussion, I don't have any direction on.
And I thought we also talked about possibly getting rid of the concept of conditional right and replacing it.
We did talk about that.
With more detailed language of standards in the code.
I do have written down either change some things maybe to limited uses, I have question mark, or I have just beef up use standards instead of conditional use permits. So that one, one, two, three, okay, awesome.
Do we need a quick discussion on lot size?
If you would like to give us direction on dimensional standards, certainly feel free. We have four other questions if you would also like to give us direction on those, but.
I think I already made myself clear on it. I was not interested in the twenty-five foot lot and twenty-five hundred foot, you know, tall skinny homes being allowed to be built on it. So I'm against that.
I'm the opposite. I feel like we should have more opportunity, but where it makes sense, not, not everywhere, but in some parts of it down and that gets.
I, I think that doesn't need to be part of direction then, because that was really not settled, I think. Well, I'll tell you what, I'll make a motion for a direction as stated by Madison.
Thank you.
In the, in the interest of, of keeping this project moving forward, I think we can continue to work on other things. Would the Council like us to come back to you and or do another joint work session, which are not the easiest things to pull together? I appreciate everyone making accommodations to do that, to dive back into some of these things? Or can we move forward and somehow otherwise keep you informed as to how we're moving forward?
You know, you know what I would like is if you could send us what y'all had on the screen earlier? And Madison, if your notes can indicate, send your notes as well to Council and then we can review all of those and have it in our heads when the time comes to.
I, I'm very interested in what might be an alternative to conditional rights.
Yeah, yeah, and that'll probably, they'll have to write that, but that would be.
That might solve a lot of concerns.
Yeah.
One thing that was in the presentation that we didn't really talk too much about was commercial uses in different zones. We kind of, we've talked about base level, commercial and some of the other areas. But there was some questions in the survey that came up around low impact uses throughout the rest of town. I think that might be worth a discussion item at some point, because I don't think we've talked about that much. I know people are very concerned about commercial affordability and the lack of viability for businesses that serve residents in town. We have barely scratched the surface of that.
Yeah, that's why I think we need, we all need the notes and everything from that, from the discussion we had, because we did try to do three hours of work in an hour and a half, so. It was worth a good try.
With Brian bringing up about the commercial, I kind of had a note on that too. You know, right now, South Mintern has a lot of commercial up there. Let it show on MU one, which MU one shows commercial and then you can have housing on the top. Just over, over the last few years, I've actually noticed that we're losing some of our commercial up there. I mean, some of the land that's been commercial has been converted to housing. My fear with having like MU one or something, are we going to lose more? Because people's going to find out that they can make more money with residential than they can with the commercial. And then all of a sudden, we start losing more. I just, I, I know our commercial is very important to the town and I don't want to see us lose anymore because we need the sales tax off of it.
Yeah, I, I had thoughts on that too, Gusty, because I've been, yeah, we've been saying that for a long time. Allowing commercials to be rezoned for residential, and that's always been a mistake in my mind. But if we, I was thinking, because most of, a lot of Main Street is mixed use. And so if someone's sitting on a, a property and they like to do something different, we could maybe give them an incentive to adopt a commercial ground floor and residential above it. And they could charge rent for a, a commercial retail outlet or whatever to them to help pay for everything. So those are the kind of thoughts that I kind of went through. So we could give them an extra incentive for that.
We kind of went that route on the one hundred block, you know, when we were doing the, you know, basically rezoning it was trying to promote having businesses on ground floor and residential on second floor.
Yeah, so I think that might be an approach you want to consider as that goes.
And Gusty, to respond to your comment about South Town. So South Town Commercial Zone District right now currently allows as a use by right, single family and duplex, and then as a conditional use.
Is that the new, that's the existing? Even though it was commercial, that's the way it was.
It's commercial, that's a use by right.
Okay.
Which has obviously allowed a commercial to kind of fade out in that area. So that's why we proposed it very well. We were actually following the community plan map, but we agreed with the community plan map in that this area, even though it is currently zoned commercial, because these uses have been allowed by right in the past, changing it to mixed use to seem to make the most sense.
So it's MU two, not MU one up there?
Two, not MU one. So slightly less intense and you can't go high. MU one is currently proposed, if you have a commercial project, you can go up to thirty-five feet. MU two is, is capped at twenty-eight feet. And so you, so it's a little bit less intense use of your property. But that is in efforts to try and mirror the current zoning that's there, because it does allow both residential and commercial in the commercial zoning.
I just remember that was kind of like the second hub of Mintern. You know, we had the one hundred block and then you had up there and it just seems like it's dwindling down.
Well, the, the intent then, you know, through the community plan, and I think, you know, validated through our proposed zone district, is to increase the amount of area within South Town that's mixed use. That would allow for more commercial, because right now there's, I don't think there's an even balance of commercially zoned property. There's very few commercially zoned properties left and most of it's residential. So the intent was to kind of move back in that direction and.
I support that because we sure need it.
And Brian, I want to circle back on your request or comment, just so we understand what to come back with. Can you, can you help me out here a little bit? So as far as commercial or Rob, do you have a?
Well, I, I feel like there's direction here of the commercial is important. And, and I, I think I would like us to come back and if you, and we can just come back to Council if we want and kind of parse out some ideas. I think we just need time to form them, because I think there's some issues that we have with making commercial work on the development and private sector side of it that I think we got to kind of talk through and does that make sense?
It does.
Yeah.
Like an outcome focused kind of approach, like we want more affordable commercial that serves residents, I think is like a common goal.
Yeah.
How do we get there? I don't know.
I mean, I think the community has a kind of a land value trap problem going on where the values are so high and the market is so heavily favoring residential and short-term rentals that the math for commercial space is not working well. And I think there's things that we can do to approach that. And I think the direction that I was kind of hoping from Council was like, that's a priority. We want to figure that out. But I think we kind of need some time to group and then we can come back to you and say, well, what about this option? What about this option? Is that?
That sounds like a plan.
Because I kind of, I, I think the home that's for sale on the corner in the hundred block is, we've watched that on the market. I think that's saying a lot about what's kind of going on as far as the values are too high to really make that work. And I kind of want us to, as a staff, can we get into that? What are the barriers? What are the problems? And what can we do to try to address that?
Well, I think the home on the hundred block, the values are too high. Unfortunately, our code is also an impediment to the sale of that property. Because somebody hurts that and shreds that.
Yeah, it's the water more than our code.
Yeah, I know. I'm just saying, if they want to build any house, you got a problem.
Even when you run the math on it, it's, it's, it's a tough equation. If you're going to pay one point six million for a point two zero acre lot, even if you did five thousand square feet of commercial on the bottom and six market rate apartments, it doesn't pan out on a fifteen year construction loan.
But I, I think there wouldn't be a real demand, and there was, until we had our water moratorium to convert some of the structures in one hundred block to a hotel, build a hotel. With the water moratorium, you just can't, you can't. I think that's really the key thing in preventing development, because you, you need more water rights than that law happens.
I think that's a, I think that's a valid point for sure. And I think that's something we can look at. It's just that when, when I'm just running the rough numbers on rebuilding or redeveloping that lot, it just doesn't work. Under our current code requirements, like even if you throw that out the window, even, even if you say, okay, you can have forty-five feet high, you could do a hundred percent lot coverage. Like, I don't think the math works.
I think in the, for a hotel, because the hotel, the, the location is really key for the hotel. And the hotel really can make hay from the expensive land.
I guess my point, though, is that i- if you build a hotel on a lot size that small, I don't think you can meet our parking requirement. I don't think you could get enough units to make the math work on the financing.
People were interested until our water moratorium.
Well, yeah, but the land values are probably much lower at that point compared to where they are now.
No, same land values. I mean, this is recent.
Ooh, either way, we need, we need to look at other options. And the property right next to it, the crummy shack that nobody ever better submit as a historical preservation, because it's one step up from an outhouse. That's it. The owner of that previously submitted some interesting designs as well, and those all got shot to pieces for these very same reasons. So, and other reasons. But point being is, as denoted in regards to the guidance, yes, please, look at those and then.
Let's come back and talk about that more. Was that helpful?
Yep. We had other questions on there, community housing standards, parking standards, process. I think we've already dealt with the process, because we finished up those sections of the code. Hopefully it'll be a better process. But are there other things that we want to streamline when we talk about affordable housing? You know, we haven't even had that conversation. I think we should come back and have a conversation. Maybe I can convince Kim to come back and sit through and really talk about our housing, our existing housing regulations and our housing action plan. We are participating with this regional housing group. The report was done, they've submitted it to DOLA. The next step is for either individual towns in our valley or the region as a group to submit some housing action plans and goals. We have a two thousand nineteen housing action plan. We need to revisit that. That's one of your strategic priorities, so you've got more work to do. But we'll come back when we have some more time, perhaps on an agenda, to talk about some other of these issues and come back with some better thoughts on conditional uses versus limited review uses and standards and all that stuff.
I'd be in favor of that. I sit on the Economic Housing Development Board. And in one of the recent meetings, Mintern was ranked dead last out of all of the communities, even behind Red Cliff, of communities that are utilizing the services that are available for affordable housing. So.
For what?
For affordable housing. So we.
Like down payment assistance and.
Yeah, so there's a lot of great tools that they have, but we need to make people aware of them and implement as much as we can into our code as well.
And Rob and I, I think that was the first meeting you asked me to set up was to meet with Kim and the, and the Housing Department to find out who they are, what they're doing. And at that meeting, she was very excited to tell us that, you know, they're, they're taking a, a different approach to diving back into these communities to make sure that we and our citizens know what's available to them. we and our citizens know what's available to them.
And we have a free parcel land at the tip of the
Minterminter North, which, and they've offered even to to design a park or design
affordable housing for us, and they say they have filled, that they're willing to contribute if we take it now. And I mean, that seems to be a perfect place for you know, with free land, you could conceivably, and perhaps we can get a grant or something, you could build really affordable housing there.
There's a, there's a lot of options. The Highlands kind of took precedent for, you know, our priorities as far as looking at town owned lands and what to do with them. But at least as of last year, Track C, Minter North, was on my to do list of going through the same kind of process to public process of what we want to do with that parcel.
The potential to help us with getting.
Yeah, but I think the Highlands is what he's saying he's devoting his time to it, because we're kind of pushing to see if we can find a buyer, so.
We've been talking to brokers and not getting very far with estimates so far. They've come in very low.
I guess, I guess there's one final thing, and maybe just to come to the town's defenses. I think we're in a really challenging position, and I know, you know, that we may be lagging in those resources, and we may be lagging a little bit on bringing units online, but we're in a really tough position that we have like resort level prices, but we don't have resort businesses. We don't have that revenue stream. So I think we're making a decent effort. I think we got to kind of find our special way through this of like, you know, Vale can throw a few million dollars down and do a buy down, but for us, that's, you know, a third of the town budget. So I think I think we're going to figure out some unique ideas, but our path is definitely much different than our peers.
You know, speaking of our peers, so you drive down to Avon, they're doing three hundred and fifty units there next to Walmart. They're doing, I think it was four fifty that got approved at Edwards. And then you basically have town avail between the two developments that they're doing there. It's like four hundred and fifty. I think everybody's doing their part, but what a point I'm trying to get is they might build enough that we not have that problem anymore. I mean, it could resolve itself with the amount that's actually in the in the pipeline right now.
Well, can I add just one thing to your comment, too, is I think maybe our mission is a little different than everybody else's. And for the the county as a whole, or maybe the other towns, to speak for them, their mission is to deliver a certain number of units. I think our mission is a little different in that we're trying to maintain the character of a community that lives and works.
Support that. That's the way I feel.
Right, and it's maybe not a unit game for us. It's just that, hey, we went from eighty percent living and working full time, and now we're at sixty-nine, and we don't want to go to forty thirty like Vale or something, because that's just not who we are. And so maybe our strategy is, it's not about achieving units. It's not about just delivering huge projects. It's about maintaining who we are.
In our strategic planning sessions that we did, we talked a lot about setting that as a goal instead of affordability metrics and AMI. We talked about setting resident occupancy.
Yeah, you want people living here.
Estimate as to when the school district plans are going to be shovel ready?
No.
No?
We are, we are still in a review period of the application that they have submitted. Preliminary plat, which is kind of the first step in finalizing their subdivision. Then they would have to go through.
A couple of years. I mean, do you have any?
If it was up to them, I'm sure they would have liked to have already broken ground. At this point, they might be hoping to break ground next spring.
Because I I think that will have a tremendous impact on our town.
And they are gonna.
That'll bring some real changes.
There's school district property, though. It'll bring changes, traffic, et cetera.
There isn't an easy solution, no matter how you look at it. There really isn't.
I think we, I think we know what we need to do.
Yeah.
Earl, you had suggested I send out my notes in the PowerPoint presentation to council. Are you requesting council respond to the other questions that we didn't get to, or just kind of think about them?
I I think y'all, from that one session, I think y'all kind of know you got some work to do. I just want to have us, I just want to give us the information so that three, four, six months from now, and you come back, we're not just going, huh?
And that, that, and Matt may have touched on that in his intro, but, you know, that is why we did this tonight, the work session, that is, because we don't want to get to the end of the line before pushing, pushing, pushing to get the code project done. We're still trying to get at least, I'm hoping to do most of the adoption before the end of the year, or at least have a final product. We don't want to get to the end of the line, and you guys look at us like, what is this? You know, so some of this was a little bit redundant, but the community plan was two years ago. Gusty, you said, hey, I remember parts of that, but I don't remember talking about this, so that's why we had to plow through that tonight, I think.
One other thing, too, I know, because it was a rushed process, meeting earlier. If I would encourage council to send Madison any more feedback after thinking all of this over, I think that'd be valuable for y'all to have as well.
Okay. Thank you.
So I made a motion with direction according to what Madison and Scott said. And Rob, I think, too. Do we have a second?
I don't know if we even needed one, just a direction item.
Just gave direction, that's it. There's, there's no motion involved in this process.
We feel the motion, the energy.
It does need to be a motion. Anyway. With that.
Future topics, here we go, meetings.
Okay, so let's look at future agenda meetings. Anybody in council have an idea, item they want to get on the schedule?
I think on the twentieth, we can do the municipal advisor selection based on the recommendation of the committee. And then hopefully, we will have a determination on the broker's opinion of value for the Highlands parcel on the twentieth.
I don't know if that's realistic, because I think it's going to be hard finding a broker who there's so few compables.
That's very true. I got an email this afternoon that said, well, there's, here's my idea, but there's no real comps. So that was their words.
Really having to do it without comps.
Well, if no decision on the twentieth, we'll bring an update of where we are, who we've talked to, what we've learned. We'll do that. And then September, I'd like us to do a walkthrough on the design of the water treatment plant thus far, so you can kind of see the three D model, where we're at, what's included, what's not, and just start asking questions about, well, what is this and why is that there, just so we can have that. And Jared from H J will walk us through, give you an idea, and then also break down the estimate a little bit more on the eleven million, so you can see how that is linking together, what's costing us the fortune in in that eleven million. Yeah, two point something million dollars in excavation fill, so. Those are the major things.
I had the good fortune of being down in Ridgeway, URA area about a week and a half ago and got to catch up with Michelle and Alex. And they said to say hello.
Cool.
Yep.
We don't care. She's gone.
Jay has his hand raised.
Just so you guys know, October first, we actually get to look at the budget, too. I wanted to put that out there, because it's kind of an exciting time of the year.
I'll be gone.
Okay, those deadpan faces just aren't playing off.
Playing the trip yet, Jay, but I'll be gone.
Well, is that to pour us a motion?
I'll make a motion there, Jern.